All right, it's eight thirty, y'all call this morning's meeting to order. Moving into the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, citizens to be heard. Is there anyone here that's wishing to speak on anything out of the agenda? Mr. Burnett, feel free to come up. Good to see you again this morning. We did have a pretty good conversation with you last week. Is there anything that's come up that's new that we need to be made aware of?
Well, I'd just like to know, that's forty, thirty-eight million dollars and three hundred and twenty-five thousand natural resource block grant. Who's responsible to?
I did check on that, and the document that you have is state allocated funds. So that's the amount for the entire statewide. And I talked to Lynn Foss at Soil and Water, and the portion that Clay County gets is miniscule on that, but that is the entire amount that goes to all of those programs statewide.
Okay, so who's administered the law? You're getting some money, apparently.
Right, I think I clarified that Soil and Water is, kind of distributes what they get from that, but that's all allocated from the state, so that comes from the legislature.
Well, you get shoreland management funds, right?
Yes, a small amount of that, and Soil and Water manages that.
Who does?
The Soil and Water Conservation District.
And they're within the county?
Right.
What, you've been, I've been told Tim administers it.
Well, you, I talked to Lynn Foss last week, and he's very well up to speed on what the issues are with your property, and he's even been out, and, I mean, knows exactly what we're talking about.
Who does?
Lynn Foss, from the Soil and Water Conservation District.
I've never spoken with Lynn Foss.
He's been out to your property with Bruce Albright from the watershed.
Well, who takes care of the subsurface sewer treatment systems? You get money for that.
I think we covered that last week. Brian Berg?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may. We have been over this issue in depth, and, I mean, here's just one document that planning and zoning has researched in regards to this issue. There is a township road that was plotted back in, was it nineteen seventy-two, when, I believe? And the issue at hand, we think, is some runoff and some drainage, and the Buffalo River watershed, Buffalo Red watershed, has been out there several times. We've been out there, our engineers have been out there. It's a township issue in regards to the road and runoff, and there's been property disputes, and we've been instructing Mr. Burnett that that is a civil issue, that has to be taken up with his neighbor, and if it has to be through the courts. We don't know that there's a whole lot more that the county can do on this. So I guess if we could get specific question, just a minute. If we could get specific questions of what he wants answered, we may be able to answer those. Now, Mr. Burnett asked for a meeting this spring with all parties, and we said to, we would welcome hosting that at the county, but he was to set it up because we have had many, many parties involved in several meetings on this. So we would certainly honor hosting a meeting that he would want. Thank you.
That didn't answer my question I asked, though. Who takes, when the property is sold, and there's supposed to be a review of the septic system?
That is us.
And have that admin, and to approve it?
That is us.
What has, what has went wrong? We're getting poisoned out there. There's a sewer system that's non-conforming, it's taking in groundwater. It's supposed to be a holding tank. So every spring, that tank fills up with sewage from groundwater, and once the frost goes out, where's that go? Into our drinking water. That's what these laws are for.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Can I respond to that? The issue that we have been made aware of, the septic systems out there, is the ones that work in the right-of-way, the township right-of-way. And the township and the community is working with our planning department to give variance until they mature out. Now, if there is a leaky one or something, we're not aware that one is polluting the water out there.
We brought it up to you in three of our meetings, Brian.
I believe that was the non-conforming one in the right-of-way, because I-
No, there's none that are non-conforming in the right-of-way. This one's right up by the lake.
Well, that's a new issue, so I think-
It's not a new issue. It's since two thousand and fifteen, I'm sorry, but I-
Mr. Burnett, please. That's a new issue that we are being brought up to speed today, so that's something we can definitely follow up on.
You know, all these laws that you were saying that you just police in the urban area?
I don't believe I said that.
Pardon me?
I don't believe I said that.
You've all said that, especially the attorney that said she rewrote the state and federal law. Is she around today, or? Because on your portfolio, for your job title and your duties, has all these laws in it, but nobody's doing anything.
Again, the issues that we knew about, there is an entire document showing how much time we spent following up on those. I'm telling you today, thank you for coming to bring up a new issue, and we have the protocol in place to follow up and make sure that those are in compliance.
What, we've been doing this, my neighbors and I, for three years. You do have a lot of documents, and so do I. So how do we get to, to not quit the denial and start adapting the laws you're being paid to adapt? To administer?
You know, I'm sorry that you feel like we're denying it. I'm telling you, thank you for coming and bringing up a new issue, and there is staff in place to take care of that, and you're saying we're denying it, but I'm saying we will work on it.
Okay. And I want my land back that Tim Magnusson gave to the neighbors on shoreland?
That's something that if you feel there's a civil problem, that that's-
It's not civil. It's in the, in his permits on, that he gave my land to these other people and took it away from my family and me. Is that civil? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Magnusson, do you have something to add?
The sewer system in question, Madam Chair, has-
Put to a microphone.
Been inspected by-
Tim, can you come up to the microphones? Thank you.
I talked to Dewey, he pumped that he did not inspect it.
Morning.
Good morning. The sewer system that Mr. Burnett is talking about has been reviewed by the county health department, or the county environmental services folks, and determined to be compliant. I guess I don't know how Mr. Burnett knows that it's leaking, whether he's been in the tank or not, I don't know. But it was reviewed by the environmental services folks.
Was the review all within the last year?
The last year or two. Whenever there was a requirement for it, I don't know if it was a sale, or what it amounted to. But that question came up, I checked with Bruce and Cantor Environmental Services, and they said that they had done their due diligence on that one, and it was in compliance.
The inspection report, there's nothing filled out on it, the inspection report is not even signed by anybody. How can that have been reviewed? It needs to be looked at, because we're getting poisoned.
Madam Chair, we'll review that one again.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen that wishes to be heard today? If not, we'll move into the approval of permit bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, moving to the minutes from February sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our eight-thirty-five item, Rhonda and Larry Young from the Social Services Financial Division, good morning.
Good morning. We are here today to request approval to fill two retirements that we have this year. We actually have at least three coming up this year. Two of them, one in March and one in May. The one fortunate thing about some of the retirements is we're able to get a little bit longer notice. So the one in May, we are here today to address as well. So the first one in your packet is our office support specialist position. This is a position that is, works in our adult mental health, chemical health, adult protection service area. We are pretty low on office support specialist positions, so it would be very critical that we fill this retirement position. Her last working day is the nineteenth of March, and she'll carry out some of her vacation, but we will still see a budget savings of a little over seventeen hundred dollars, assuming that we hire a new office support specialist on step one, which is likely to occur. So that would be the first request. Should I go on to the second?
Do you want to deal with the first request?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the second position we're looking at is in Larry's income maintenance unit. This will be a retirement in May. This is an employee that's been with us for over twenty years, twenty-six years. We actually have another one that's anticipated in November that's been with us for an equal amount of time. So this year, we're going to be losing over fifty years of expertise and experience in that income maintenance unit, and we've experienced that over the last five years. We've had a lot of retirements. So we are requesting to move forward with posting this position and moving forward with filling it right-of-way. The earliest we would hope to have somebody on board would be April, but we're finding that it's taking quite a while to get people on board, and that if we were able to get somebody on board April second, that would allow us two months of an overlap time. They spend at least a month just getting through training, so this would be really fortunate for us to have as much overlap time as we can. The wage calculator would suggest we would still see a budget savings even with the retirement payout, just close to a couple hundred dollars, if we were to hire April second at step one financial worker.
And I see that you're also looking for opportunity to backfill if needed?
Yes, please, in the motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve with the backfill.
Backfill included for the financial worker position.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? I just want to say that it's hard to lose that amount of knowledge, obviously, but thank you for your guidance, especially during this transition.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into the annual department update for the assessor's office, and also set the board for the two thousand and eighteen Board of Appeal. Oh, I didn't manage to skip you, I'm sorry, recorder's office, Diane. I'm sorry. Yeah. Good morning, everyone. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Just for, I'll just kind of say where our office is located. I'm Diane Strifel. Our office is located on the second floor in the south end. We have four staff, which includes me, and we have like a vitals side and a real estate side in our department, and all of us are cross-trained to work both as accounters. Our mission is to promptly record, file, and preserve documents accurately in an efficient, responsible, and professional manner for posterity and legal purposes. We are a local issuance office for the state of Minnesota to provide birth certificates and death certificates for anybody that's born in the state of Minnesota. Our certificate paper is all uniform with all of the state. It's specific to us with that it has our state, our county code on it, and we are really, the state of Minnesota monitors everything quite carefully with us. We, when we have an order, we have to count it and put it right into the state system so they monitor everything that we do, which is, which is really great. And other, with vital records, we also provide marriage licenses. So anyone who wants to get married in the state of Minnesota can come to our department and get a marriage license, and then, once they're married, the certificates have to come back so that we can issue certified marriage certificates. And that we have to keep forever for people so that when they start retiring, or whenever, they have to provide that they're married, or whatever. And that went down to the marriage certificates. So we've had a lot of that. There's a lot of baby boomers that have been retiring, or if they move from Minnesota to the state of North Dakota, they have to prove how their name changed with a certified marriage certificate and also certified birth certificate. So we've had quite a few customers, and gentlemen or ladies that have, need CDL licenses, they now have to have certified birth certificates. So we've kind of had an increase in that this past year. We have an organization, which is MomsMM.gov, which is a statewide indexing system for all the state of Minnesota. All the counties are participating, and it's working quite well. Someone calls us and asks us where, you know, they think they got married or applied in Clay County, we'll look it up and say, no, you gotta, you know, you applied in this county, this is the county that you'll have to get your information from. There's also the VSO officers, it's a program called DADS. We keep the index, we index for them, and they're able to go onto the state system and find out where somebody's DD two fourteen is recorded. And I know that our VSO office uses that an awful lot. Notary filings, we file that, and we do more marriage ordinations. And of course, a lot of our documents, in the real estate, we report all types of documents. Deeds, mortgages, and the history is there, so whoever wants to find out anything about their property is welcome to do that. We do military discharges for free. We provide the taxpayer with a copy of their deed if they want one. We sell county plat books, and we offer plats, coroner certificates, and surveys on our county website for free. And the real estate records are available online with a paid subscription. Last year, you had asked to find, about the fees. Most of our fees, as you saw on our, my sheet, they're all mandated by the state of Minnesota, and we only get a portion. So I guess at this point, well, some breakdowns. Real estate recordings were eleven thousand four hundred seventy-two. We did six hundred ninety-two marriage applications. We provided six hundred twenty-six marriage certificates, that's above the six hundred ninety-two that we, for the people that got married, because the first certificate is free. Birth certificates, fourteen hundred. Death certificates, thirty-one hundred. And notary applications, a hundred fifteen, and ordinations were a hundred fifty-four. So, like I said, we only get a portion of the vitals, and if any of you have any questions about our fees, I can answer them at this point.
Any questions?
I have no questions. Other comments, the last couple of weeks, I've had opportunity or necessity where I had to utilize your services, and I just liked the willingness for you, that I received, to help, and there was a friendly, and, I mean, the willingness to help, and it really helped me out.
Well, thank you.
So I want to thank you for your staff for being so kind.
Thank you. And if, like, I don't know if I mentioned, we're quite cross-trained. I was on sick leave for six weeks, and our staff stepped up immensely, and we're doing a lot of training. I can say that those, they were able to cover the books and everything, so you never know if, I might not come back someday, or somebody else in my department might not come back, you know? You have, in the small departments, you have to really, I feel, you have to be able to cross-train everyone so that the county can be served.
Well, I really appreciate you including the fees. It helps clarify for us, those that are mandated by statute, and those that are, are set by the county in the majority, as you said, of yours are mandated by statute.
Right, they are.
Diane, I have a question, just curious. The real estate recordings number, has it, how did, how has it ebbed and flowed through the years? Has it gone up, or?
It's, it stayed about the same. I think the recordings were down a couple hundred documents. Now, if the interest rate's gone, it's going to go up a little bit, so maybe people won't be mortgaging their property. And if they don't mortgage, then satisfactions aren't filed, I mean, you know, recorded. Hopefully, it looks like there's a couple more plats that are going to be coming on this year, and with that, you know, the urban, the rural area seems to be developing quite a bit. So it's kind of the status quo has, has stayed about the same.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, you're not looking for action today, but thank you very much for all that you do with your department.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, now we'll move into the assessor's office. Department update? Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning. First of all, I guess our big news is the combining of the offices of assessing and planning and zoning. Tim and Lynn moved down January thirtieth, I believe, and are pretty settled in, so I think things are moving right along. The next item is values and ratios for assessment two thousand and eighteen. We receive statistical information from the Department of Revenue monthly from about November through February, and our ad sales, we'll start with that, we had forty-three sales overall. They were within the compliance range of the ninety to a hundred and five, but we do have different farm, land neighborhoods through the county, so we do break them down. So projecting is the valley land, we'll see about a five percent reduction on tillable land. The ridge area, about a six percent reduction, and the rest of the county basically will be held except for Yulin Township. They had six sales, and they came in at eighty percent, so they will see a considerable increase in their tillable land values in Yulin Township. Residential, we had six jurisdictions, no, I'm sorry, we had three jurisdictions where there were six or more sales that were out of compliance, and that's Oakport Park and Saban City. So they will also be seeing increases. I have to say that our large increases that occurred for the seventeen assessment appears to be a good reflection of what the market is doing in our large cities where we have considerable sales. They are all hitting within the ninety to a hundred and five ratio. One township, though, that did come in a little high was Riverton, and so we are backing off value there. I do like to aim for that midpoint, so they came in at almost a hundred and four percent, so I will be backing off value in Riverton Township on residential. Areas that we did onsite visits for the eighteen assessment, they included Eglin, Holy Cross, Kurtz, Morken, Park, Yulin Township, and Saban, which is approximately two thousand three hundred parcels that were reviewed either onsite or with the use of GIS for agricultural land. And the next item is to schedule the county board of equalization and appeal, and it has to be the, any time after the second Friday in June. So the date that I propose to you is June twelfth with a start time of six thirty. So I guess I would just need a motion to ensure that date, hopefully it works for you.
I'll move to approve that date.
Second.
A motion to approve, and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we'll get that on the calendar.
Okay, great. Another item that took place the first of February was an update to our website. We now have more data out there for our residents and even business people who are in this real estate line of work. We've added four years of estimated market values, more land detail, a sales history, a permit history, and a photo of the main building. We also have a breakdown of additional buildings and structures. And this, again, was rolled out February first with the help of our CAMA vendor Vanguard and our IT department as well. Moving into fees. The fees that were presented, you know, small handout to you, those were approved August of two thousand and seventeen, and we added a quarter, basically, to the two different groupings that we have. And with that, we added about thirty-three hundred dollars in valuation, or in extra income. And what I'm proposing is that maybe we could add a quarter every other year to our rates, and probably then get to out into that billing time of twenty twenty-seven with that quarter increase. And if things were to stay the same, you know, it might add about three thousand dollars every other year then to, to the income that's generated.
Well, I just want to comment, I think part of the discussion that came out of your presentation in August was that we needed to make sure we're looking at these fees appropriately, and that it's covering the staff time that it's taking to do some of these issues. And I think what you proposed is a minute amount in terms of all of the decisions that you have, but I think it's appropriate to kind of look at, and I think that every other year is, is a fair proposal. Any other comments on that? Any other comment? Do you want action on that?
That would be great, because then we could have it established, and, you know, we'd be out of ways, and then we can revisit it again in time.
I would like to make a motion to accept proposed fees for assessment work.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
That's it.
We're a little early. Bruce, can we move into your adoption of resolutions? Okay, all right, adoption of resolutions for the Buffalo Red Watershed District, the two thousand and eighteen tax petitions. Mr. Albright? We have two of your managers as well. Good morning, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We're here for two thousand and eighteen to seek, hopefully, your willingness to sign petitions to allow us to use our proposed taxing authority in accordance with watershed law. It's one oh three D nine oh five subdivision three. I think, looking back through the record, this is nothing new. We've been here at least ten years in a row or so in that regard. Sent you a whole lot of information, obviously a whole lot of history. One issue that usually comes up during these discussions, of course, is, you know, where are we at with the Red River Watershed Management Board? And they're going through major reorganization as we speak. So they've hired a new executive director, they're looking at establishing an office, probably in Ada, et cetera, et cetera. So as they kind of work through their issues, we look forward to hearing from them. I think the ball is in their court. They should, need to come to us and tell us what they've changed, how they've modified things, and give us the reasons why we might consider rejoining.
Hey, excuse me just a minute. You said they may establish, have already established that obviously in Ada.
Yes, yep. Yep, they've made that decision.
I was up at the Wild Rice Watershed Board last week, and they, the guys, Rob, Philip.
Siff, yep.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't, Rob, it's already there.
And of course, it's a, it's a big step. I mean, the taxation would go to over four million looking, you know, versus one point four million we're taxing today, so it's a huge increase. Flooding has not been a problem for a couple of years, knock on wood. We know that flooding will come back again, and we're going to have those problems and issues. I think the watershed is, is moving forward in the right, taking the right steps. We've got three major projects we're working on right now, the south branch of the Buffalo River, Whiskey Creek, which is straight west of Barnesville, flows through Barnesville, has some major problems, and then just northwest of town, Stony Creek, which also has problems. So these river rain systems- So these riverine systems, I mean, we haven't touched them in a hundred-plus years, and they all show it. You know, the, there's been hydrologic changes to the watersheds, or there's, those waterways have been altered, they need to be expanded, they need to be enlarged, and we can offset that with some regional retention. So I think we've got some good projects on the books. We're here this year to look at two different levies, one being a general levy of about six hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which we use for a whole variety of things, which have been spelled out in the information that I furnish to you. And then a second levy request for five hundred thousand dollars, and that will be to actually start construction this year of the Wolverton Creek Restoration Project. In and around the Comstock area, Wolverton Creek, we got a permit to restore twenty-six miles of riverine channel down there. That's an important project, you know, both the cities of Moorhead and Fargo take their drinking water directly out of the Red River, just south of town. This thing empties into the Red River, just downstream of the two cities, so improving water quality, the habitat. And interestingly, that those farmers have been talking about a project there since the mid-1950s, so that will be under construction, and you'll see equipment out there, hopefully in May this year. So the board did commit some local funding to that project, and five hundred thousand is the first request in that regard, so. We have the two petitions, questions or comments of what we're asking?
Questions? Things digesting, we do have the resolutions, the first one is 2018-10. As a liaison to your board, I just want to thank you for the work that you are doing. You're quite active, and I've been at several farmsteads with one or a few of your managers at a time, and I think that you're well represented, and I think you're really taking into account the concerns that you're hearing from citizens. So those projects, I think, will be a great asset, definitely, to water management, so.
Well, someday I'll have to take the time before I retire to summarize what's been done in the last twenty years, you know, we've, twenty years ago, or twenty-one years ago now, since the 1997 spring flood, and I will never forget that, you know, the impact. But we've made a lot of improvements, probably forty farmstead ring dikes and buyouts, and working with the county and the city of Moorhead and Oakport.
It sounds like a retirement book.
Yeah. So we've done a lot, but we know that flooding will come back again, and some of the problems are still going to be there, so there's more work to do, we're not done, so.
One question, these projects that you're saying you want, you want to add to the, what you're going to do, is this a one-time adding for money, or, I mean, a request for money, or is, once this money's in there, then the next year we want it again and again? Or how does, how is that going to work?
For most of those, Commissioner Gross, will be, once they're done, they're done type thing. These projects get to be expensive, I know the Stony Creek Project, the restoration of the channel, the creation of a flood damage reduction site, we're looking at fourteen million. So we're constantly looking at all venues for funding. We've been successful in getting some of the sales tax money, La Sarge Sam's Outdoor Heritage Council, close to four million dollars here in the last couple of years. We got some money for Wolverton, we got some money for the South Branch. We try to get funding from the lottery proceeds, that's the Legislative Commission on Minnesota Resources, LCCMR. Bowser has grant money, I think we, that's one of the big things that I do almost on a day-to-day basis, is look behind doors for funding. In fact, going up to EERC this afternoon in Grand Forks to talk about a regional project we're looking at that could have some major flood control benefits. Again, just look in every place, Washington DC, wherever we can come with some money, because these projects are expensive. But usually, when they're done, then we go into maintenance mode on them, and we'll keep them in place, and the major cost will go away, so one-time funding.
Commissioner Haney?
I have a question about the stream improvement that you're talking about, a restoration. Is that due to siltation, you have to do dredging on it, or what is it?
Our waterways are always under constant pressure, so it gets to be a variety of things. When you look at a stream such as Wolverton, what we've seen in Clay County, and especially from Highway 75 downstream to the Red River, the channel was actually getting deeper. So we had sediment going into the Red River because it was trying to cut down a deeper grade, so we had to go in and stabilize that. Then usually in the middle sections in the upstream end, the stream channel is say, is said to be a-grading or meaning filled up with sediment. So when the DNR gives us a permit for twenty-six miles of restoration on Wolverton, they say, watershed, do what you can so that we don't fill this thing right back up again with sediment. So if we're going to restart, get it cleaned out, put in place the buffers, the side inlets, the controls on the drainage systems that use the, the stream channel, so that we can, we don't want to be back twenty years from now going, boy, that thing really worked, but we filled it up with dirt again.
There's some places on Wolverton Creek where the, the buffers are over two hundred, three hundred feet wide, just because of the lay of the land, so that'll be all grassed instead of rock now.
And those.
It won't fill up as quick as what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's why it gets so expensive too, because we have to buy the land, or, you know, or get easements and different things.
And then the other thing that we'll look at, Commissioner Haney, is that we actually put in a two-stage channel design, so we have a broad floodplain channel to carry high flows, and then a much narrower, smaller, deeper channel that will carry the water on a day-to-day basis. And when you put the meanders in, those channels are what they call self-mitigating, so they cut a little bit on the corner, they fill a little bit on an outside bend, they cut again, so that the sediment load mitigates itself throughout the lengths of the stream. So.
Commissioner Campbell, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Bruce, the, the levy amounts that you're requesting between these two resolutions, how does that compare with the total levy request in dollars from last year?
It's a very slight decrease of about three thousand dollars total. And then, of course, we always have the drainage system slash projects, which are independent, so we're taxing about, the number was here, but it's a slight decrease, although on a one-hundred-thousand-dollar valuation, Commissioner Campbell, it actually goes up a little bit because market values are down slightly. So on a hundred-thousand-dollar valuation, the watershed tax equals seventeen dollars and forty-seven cents.
And then the, these projects that you're talking about, and some of them might be improving drainage, and some is establishing additional storage?
Correct, sir.
Right? Have, are you still working with the diversion authority on that twenty-five million dollars that they have available for projects like that? Have you submitted applications?
We have received funding for the first phase of the three projects I mentioned, the South Branch of the Buffalo River, Whiskey Creek, and Stony Creek have all received the first phase of funding from the program of diversion authority because of the potential benefits that they could provide. So we're now moving into the second phase, and we'll see where that takes us. So yes, we have tapped into that resource.
And if you're successful with those, that, does that bring down, obviously that brings down the costs of having to get those funds from someplace else?
You are correct, sir. The way we look at projects, because you, you hit the nail on the head, you said, well, you're looking at some stream restorations, you're looking at some retention, we need to look at, what are the, we hope we have negative numbers, that we've lowered flows after we've done all this. If we just did a, a stream restoration on its own, we're going to increase flows downstream. When we combine it with a comprehensive look, where we go in and do all of the things and include some regional retention, the net impact is to say, okay, we've reduced flows by twenty percent in Saban or Georgetown. That's the way we've been looking at these projects, and I think the way we can survive politically by doing them. County ditch thirty-one, Stony Creek, used to belong to, was under the county's jurisdiction, and the landlords out there tell me, when your former engineer, Mr. Cousins, brought the backhoe out, it sat there for about three weeks, and due to political pressure downstream, he did not clean that ditch, the backhoe was taken out of there and moved home. So we're looking at, let's get that channel, that ditch system, working, so it provides the benefits it needs to provide to those local farmers, but then not increase flows downstream, which is still, again, going to be a big issue and concern.
I think throughout the, you know, after the 2009 flood that had occurred, I think there was a goal of every watershed district was to reduce by twenty percent. Isn't that correct? Wasn't that the recommendation that came out of the Red River Basin Commission, that every watershed district should try to work towards a twenty percent reduction?
That was a number that they had picked. You know, that was, some of that was based on, was done about 2009, but some of it was based on the 1997 flood, so that, that organization, the Basin Commission and others are maybe taking a look at, should we rerun those numbers again, just given the fact that I mentioned earlier, all the work that we've done, with buyouts and ring dikes. You probably need to be constantly looking at that, you know, is the twenty percent the number? It was a number that was thrown out at that point in time, and we did, through our studies, show that we could, we could meet that goal with these regional retention sites.
What is a regional retention site?
Where you would take a sub watershed, sir, of like Stony Creek, which is probably forty square miles, and you would put in a series of dikes or levies that you could hold water during a flood near the outlet of that forty-square-mile watershed. So you've got the water coming down, near the outlet, you'd have a, a series of canals or channels or structures that would put it into this area, where you actually can close a gate and say, we're going to hold it there.
And actually, as a flood control project, that benefits the region.
Yeah. So on these major watersheds, we call them regional retention areas.
There's a sluice gate or something in there?
And through our work, we actually have some landlords on Stony Creek that are quite anxious to see what might come out of this, actually in, in Barnesville Township too. A landlord that came in with his wife that said, I hope I don't say something that I, she's here to kind of, the first time he heard about it, to now a year and a half later, he's coming in, and we've been friends all along, but he, what's going on with your project? I want to find out, I'm interested to see what you can do, so. It's been, been interesting fun work. But like I said, we're not done, we've got some more to do.
Well, you did present us with the two resolutions.
I think we're going to take these separate.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve 2018-10.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-10.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll submit a motion to approve 2018-11.
A motion to approve Resolution 2018-11.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Our work with the county will continue. We have an advisory committee meeting, the date not set yet, but that'll be coming up here probably in March. And then, of course, we'll also be starting the One Watershed One Plan, which we're, you know, there's like eighty-three major watersheds in the state of Minnesota, we're going to be like number nine or ten on the One Watershed One Plan. They're going to start funneling major dollars to those areas that have One Watershed One Plan, and that should set Buffalo up real well to, to bring in more money to do the things we need to do for the citizens of the county and the watershed district.
Commissioner Gross, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not a question, but just a comment, you know. A lot of times we talk about the watershed board, and we think about ditches and stuff like that, you know, that's what you guys do, but I just wanted to thank you for all the work you've done on the, I'm on the Heartland Trail Board there, and the work that you've done on that, you know, helped us out there, you know, that's just, I mean, we don't realize all the work that you guys do sometimes, you know, all the different facets you get involved in, and appreciate the work you're doing on Heartland Trail.
I think a lot of people don't realize part of our, is education, you know, with River Watch, and we do a lot of stuff.
Right, I, I agree with that, it's just, we don't realize.
Education's very important.
Yeah, we think of ditches, you know, that's, that's what we think about.
And speaking of ditches, we will have, our goal is to have all the ditches meet the state buffer law requirement by November 1st, that they'll all have the one-rod grass buffer strip on it. We're taking this opportunity to clean up a whole bunch of right-of-way issues. Some of that right-of-way on those ditches was acquired in 1892, so now is the time to bring them current, tie them into legal section lines, get that right-of-way recorded, and take care of it forever, so.
Commissioner Campbell, have a comment?
Yeah, I do, I have a comment, and. About two weeks ago, we got the final notice that Phase Four of the Oakport Project was signed and certified, making that project finally done. That project started in 1997, and it was now complete in 2018. Twenty years is a long time, but it was still worthwhile. That project also had lawsuits and everything that goes with it, and I guess the, the whole deal, when you get into dealing with the major flood control projects, they do take time. And this, this is great news for the people out there, and I know I've had some people asking me about the process of being able to notify their lending institutions, and I know now that that's taken over by the city of Moorhead, I believe, is that who they have to get their document from, Bruce? Do you know that?
Yes, that would be because of the annexation by the city, they would need to work with the city offices to, to get that.
Okay, because I, I've had several requests of people who, obviously, their flood insurance had really skyrocketed too, and they, they want to be able to see that savings, and so they can, is there contact, would it be Bob Zimmerman then, or somebody at the engineering department?
Correct, you would work with the city engineering department. Unfortunately, we did find out that the, while the levy, second phase of the levy has been certified, it becomes effective June 15th, and there's some thirty-day publication notices and things, but, so the end is, is in sight. We will be holding a, an open house here this spring, just to kind of commemorate or celebrate the fact that this project is now done. It'll be an opportunity to thank a whole lot of people that made some, Senator Langseth, for example, the year we got fourteen million dollars to work on Oakport, that was huge. So we want to thank those people, Representative Lane and Mark Bart and Senator Ekin and others. And then it'll also be an opportunity to kind of talk to them about, where do we go from here? How do we continue to maintain the project, what's happening up there? We're working with NDSU, they're doing some native grass seedings and some things going on, so hopefully we can get a date on the calendar that people can get there. That Saturday morning, when I drove through Oakport, and, and people were using backhoes to dig up their lawns to throw the dirt against the side of their house, I thought, what is going to happen here? I'll never forget it.
It was a war zone.
Yeah. Thank you for all of your support, because alone we couldn't do that, it's the counties that, you guys appoint good people, and it's, we've got more work to do, but we'll keep doing it.
Thank you, it's also good to see you here as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Move into the adoption of resolutions supporting the Motor Vehicle License Bureau. Mr. Berg and Laurie? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Well, what you have before you is a resolution that we're asking for your support on, and this comes about by way of, I guess, a, a inquiry. The Super Cheryl Supervisor, I don't see her here this morning, she was in the office one day, and, and I guess we've been talking about this off and on, but Commissioner Campbell had asked her about how things were going out there, and we had a little discussion about the, the confusion with the new state computer system. And if you haven't received any feedback on it, I, I'm surprised, because there's been long lines, there's been lack of service, and it's been tied to the computer system that the state is trying to update. And now I think, what I've heard is, the figure is forty-three million dollars that they're asking for additional dollars now to correct some of the problems that this has been creating. It, it, it's, it's really kind of frustrating, and it's really frustrating for the customer. And what it's doing is, it's causing us, from a county financial standpoint, is we can't collect the revenues that we want to collect. Laurie and I have had a discussion about this, and I know she said that they, we, we should be looking at the transactions, but transactions turn- we, we should be looking at the transactions, but transactions turn into money. And if we haven't, don't have the number of transactions to do, then you guys are making up the dollars through local levees. And we, for 2018 now, we have, the budget is showing about 110 to 130, depending upon how you want to look at it, because if you want to put rent in there and things that we do for other buildings, it's, it's going to be about $130,000 worth of county monies that you're putting in to, to supplement the state in collecting their motor vehicle fees. And we fail. It's time for them to, and in 2015, it was even money.
We actually made money in 2015. We had revenues over expenditures.
And, and it's, you, you, you added a person here two years ago, because the volumes were increasing, but the dollars aren't increasing because of the computer system and the efficiency, the, the lack of the efficiencies that the state's doing. And so I think they need to be told this, and they need to be told it fairly strongly. And the resolution before you does that. And we're, with your permission, we've identified the, we'll send this to our legislative representatives, the governor's office, the State Department of Motor Vehicle, and the Association of Minnesota Counties, who sent this draft of resolution that we adopted to it. The, so if, I, I, I don't know. It's just, it's just very frustrating. I, I, I don't know how to say it any differently. It's costing us money on the local level, and, and it shouldn't.
So is there any, anybody going to be held accountable for this? Is there any word on that from the state? Or is the plan just to pump as much money into it as they can until they get it resolved? So, I mean, is there any word from St. Paul on this, or? Is there any guarantee that pumping $43 million is going to correct the problem? They don't even know that, do they?
Yeah, the whole rollout was done poorly. They did it in July, worst time of year. They, they rushed it through. They did it in July. And it apparently wasn't, or obviously wasn't tested properly. Transactions don't work. Finally, they're, you know, they've gotten some workarounds on some things, but the whole rollout has been terrible.
I've got a question. Walk me through the scenario. When someone comes in to purchase their license tabs for the year, and they come up to the counter, first, they take a number when they get in there, and they sit down, and they wait till they're called.
Right.
Then they come up to the counter, and they bring their registration with them, and they give them the credit card or the debit card or whatever, and, and the paperwork. And then the employee takes it, and then what happens to it?
I actually haven't worked with the system, but they pull it up, and they have to enter all the information into the system.
On their computer screen right there.
And the renewals of the tabs, you know, I think those are working okay, but it, it's title transfers and a number of other transactions. Actually, Cheryl can probably, she can answer your question much better than I can.
Okay.
But I think the tab renewal itself is, is okay.
I did my license, redo my license not very long ago. That went smoothly for me.
Yeah, so I think that part is okay, but...
But I, I agree. It's in terms of the transfer. We purchased a stock trailer last year, and the plates took forever to come. I mean, it's just as ridiculous.
Well, and Madam Chair, before Cheryl answers the question as to how the exact operation is affecting and, and what isn't happening, there, there's another big issue, and we addressed it last year when you, or a year, a year and a half ago. I think what you did is you, we added the position halfway through the year, so we'd split the increase between two, two budget cycles. But anyway, the, the language barriers that are being created out at Motor Vehicle and the licensing takes the staff a lot more time to process this. And again, that's falling on the local shoulders because of the cost factor. So Commissioner Haney asked about how is, what, when you bring in your renewal card for a license, what is the process going through? And can you kind of tell us where the glitches come in with the computer system?
Well, unfortunately, it's different almost every day. You know, and that's something we kind of run into. There's a lot of updates. We have updates every day. They have, you know, probably once a month, once every two or three months, they will send out some more fixes, they claim. Well, then the bad thing is, then it fixes some, you know, then something else doesn't work. I just had a gal try to do like a title transfer with a duplicate title. It was a three-step process. She had to do it three different times to get one transaction done. So like, when the renewal, when they come in, that used to be quicker, too, but it isn't as much. And a lot of people that renewed their tabs through the state, or even if you went online to check it and went into a pending status, we couldn't do anything. And, you know, then St. Paul's answer to everything is, "Give them a 60-day permit. Give them another one. Give them another one." You know, or else what they do, unfortunately, is they'll say, you know, "Go into the local office. They'll give you a set of tabs." You know, and we're fortunate, we're paid by the county. But some of the private ones, you know, if they go in there, and, you know, they are losing their revenue, you know. And we have two, you know, because people have mailed renewals into St. Paul, and they haven't gotten them, and, you know. I called for a gentleman the other day. He renewed three buses. He got three 18s. Well, he already had 18 on there, you know. And, and the only, you know, response I could get from one of the gals is, "Yikes, I guess that's screwed up still." You know, so it's, you know, we're dealing with people many times, many, many times, you know.
And there's no guarantee that $43 million is going to fix it?
Unfortunately, no.
It's ridiculous.
When we got training, you know, last, from May till July, we knew things weren't working, and we addressed that, and we were not the only office that did. And the cops say, "Oh, it'll work when it goes live. Oh, it'll work when it goes live." They claimed it worked Saturday. We opened up on Monday at 2:00. We're only open for two hours. It was horrible, you know. I mean, waiting on someone for an hour, and some people came back multiple times. We can't transfer special plates. And a gentleman called today that got picked up on Valentine's. He had Iraqi war plate, you know, veteran on his vehicle. And he said, "You know, I transferred that last summer, and the cops said that doesn't belong on my plate." You know, so if you have a special plate, or if you have a handicap plate, the poor handicap people, they can't even transfer the current plate they have. All these people that have these special plates are not able to do that. And for the longest while, they just said, "Hang on to the transaction." So there was hundreds of thousands of dollars that St. Paul did not get because we were not able to do the transactions. And we do all the car dealers in Fargo-Morehead. They've been very patient, but it's very hard, very hard. So then finally, about three months into it, they said, "Well, give them a 60-day permit. We want that money." But they still weren't able to transfer the personalized plate or the special plate, one that they paid extra money for. You know, and, and I mean, it's hard, because, you know, we were trained one way, but it keeps changing. I mean, we all had a webinar the other day, but it's only going to be a temporary fix for two or three weeks, because to get the farm trucks licensed, they know it wasn't right, but then we'll have to do something else in April. So it, it's hard to retain that, because you're constantly changing and constantly doing something different. You know, they've kind of, I don't know, there's 120-some workarounds for transactions that were won. My girls may have a four-step process to do some things, you know.
Is anything with that program working?
Some things. You know, it's hard to think of what. I mean, every day is kind of different.
Right. It's so inconsistent.
Yeah, yeah. And I balance all the money. And I mean, it was very scary, because when we were training last year, they did not show me how to do that until it had already been launched. And I'm like, "Okay, how do I know how much money I'm supposed to give to the state and us to keep?" Because they had no idea how to do that. You know, they hadn't, there were a lot of scenarios they didn't think about, you know, obviously, because we have, you know, nothing is really cut and dried and easy anymore. Renewals used to be, but, but a lot of people move from North Dakota. If you have a loan on your car, I mean, we're a border city. And if you move in from out of state, you have a loan on your vehicle, you don't turn in the title because you're still paying the lien holder. And we always used to do that. One of the first things they had to fix was that people that had a loan on their car couldn't render their tabs. And it's like, "Okay, that is not going to work," you know. So then they had to find a fix, a temporary fix for that, because they're like, "Oh, I guess a lot of people have loans on their car." You know, just things they hadn't even thought of, so.
That's funny, but it's bad.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. We kind of, yeah, yeah. So anyway.
Well, I do have to say that while going to get tabs has in the past been something that's significantly frustrating for me, and that's nothing against your department. It is a frustrating process as it is. And I think you really, one, your staff is phenomenal to deal with the amount of people that are in a frustrated period anyway. But to have the computer screen up that kind of lets people know, "Hey, this is out of our hands, and this is not working," has been helpful. But please relay our thanks to your staff for what they've had to do with this process. And hopefully, hopefully, there can be some sort of response from this resolution.
Do you know whether $43 million that they want to add, is that to the same company that started this?
From what I understand, no. They got a different one. And it was in, in like in-house, in-state IT people, because they paid 90 to 100 million. They'd been working on this midlers for 10 years. And they kind of knew that it wasn't ready to launch, but I think they ran out of extensions. So they just said, "We're pulling the plug, and we're going to release it." And, and I mean, we were all, you know, all the offices felt the same way. So I believe they got, you know, and I, then they said they hired a new company now, because unfortunately, we're changing the driver's license system starting like October 10. We will be issuing, you know, the real ID and compliant. So we will start training for that soon, and they haven't, you know, finished the motor vehicle side.
We're holding our breath on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Madam Chair, it's more than holding our breath. It's costing you money.
Right.
Costing you a lot of money. And, and frankly, the, the state is, as the resolution states, the state collects over a billion dollars a year through these different branch offices. And they need to, if, if they are shouldering the blame on this, which they should be, they should be paying for it. That's the bottom line. And, and, and fix it. Customer service is, is first and primary. And that's lacking in, in this, this transaction right now. And that needs to be fixed. So we'd ask for your support in, in the resolution to try and get some action out of them, or to assist in getting action. I'm going to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, and I believe we have a comment.
Yeah, I do. I, I want to thank whoever worked on putting this resolution together and the wording on it and the history behind it. I think it, it helps to outlay the whole situation at hand. And the, you're right, Brian. I think we're, we're, it's costing us a lot of money. And through no fault of ours, and it's a responsibility of the state to fix it. And quite frankly, they should be reimbursing us for our losses.
Say so.
And so I, and I certainly would encourage, I know, I saw a memo that general government was having this in, in their policy discussions at AMC, and I think they were forwarding it over to...
Public safety.
Public safety as well. And so I think that there's two different policy groups out of our Minnesota Association of Counties who has this on the radar, Cheryl. So, so hopefully, we'll get some strong action and reaction from this in the legislative session. So I, I fully support the resolution.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion?
I got one that...
Commissioner Ross?
What are other states doing? I mean, is this a new thing here? I mean...
I know North Dakota just recently remodeled, and I believe they went to a new state system. I believe they were closed for like a week, and, you know. And there isn't as many people in North Dakota, but I know they did not have the problems. You know, and, you know, we always talk about, I think it's hard to fix things, because every office, you know, five days a week, we're trying to get stuff done. And then they're supposedly, you know, doing all these updates and fixes, you know, and then we're still flooding the system. It's really hard. You know, maybe if they were closed for two, three weeks and got everything fixed, you know, but that isn't going to help us.
And Madam Chair, that is not, and I know she's not making excuses for Minnesota. That's not an excuse, that North Dakota doesn't have the population that Minnesota does. Break it down to units, or if you have to, whatever. Adding $43 million, the system over there, I'm sure didn't cost anywhere near that. And, and this business of, "You've got a lot of population," just doesn't cut it with me as far as excuses, you know. They can, they can drop it down and be more efficient.
I've got one more question, and that in regards to law enforcement. Are we having any issues of citizens that are being fined or paying fees, extra fees, for not having current registration due to the failure of these, of this system?
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioner Haney, I don't know about that if, but it puts law enforcement in a very difficult position.
Right.
Because is it current? Isn't it current? Has it, have they changed it legally? Who owns it now? I mean, there's just a lot of confusion that creates when, when that registration...
Then will the citizens be coming back and demanding a refund on the fee or the fine?
And we found out from the state of Minnesota that they are not issuing refunds, because, oh yeah. Oh yeah, and that was, you know, very interesting, because we know that like with farm trucks and different things, that the fees aren't right. And then they said, "Well, you know, it's their lucky day, or I guess they paid more than they're supposed to." That was their answer to us from St. Paul. And so then they said, "Have them fill out a refund." Well, to last week, they had not started issuing refunds for overcharging since last July. And I don't, and they weren't sure when that was ever going to happen. So just FYI, not good.
I imagine we'll have some discussions about this next week when we're in St. Paul.
Absolutely. Well, I think this is a good start. Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second on the resolution. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang in there, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Stephen?
We got your back.
Good morning. This morning, we'll talk about the percentage of adjustment to the 2018 variable hour grid.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Thank you for having me here this morning. You guys recall, last year, we came to this board with a kind of a two-year plan to look at the variable hour grid percentage for the juvenile center. We did make an adjustment last year, and would begin requesting to make an adjustment this year from 65% of the full-time wage to 72%, which would be moving our salary from 1448 to 1601, starting. The increase was, was in, in our 2018 budget. We spent considerable amount of time in our advisory group over the last couple of years talking about this, and I support, support this change.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. I assume this has been vetted, vetted through, as you said, with that advisory group?
Yeah, I can comment to that. This is, this becomes one of the competitive issues that we have with being able to keep a line of employees lined up. And so it's critical that we, we have a competitive wage so that we can keep these people.
Yeah.
I know it's, it creates havoc on you and your management staff when we are constantly looking for individuals to, to come in. And it's, when you look at what's going to happen in the future now, it's that...
Right.
That without this, that, that problem could be magnified even more, so.
That's correct.
I, I, you know, and sure, all of our member counties, all 11 member counties fully supported and understood the need to go to this requested dollar amount.
I, I just have a question in terms of how much hours you're utilizing variable hours. Is there, I understand that that's a necessity, that we can't get around having, but is there an implementation plan to reduce those numbers that we need anyhow?
We've looked, I think, in the last probably three budgets. We've gone from roughly 41% to about 50% part-time staff, or part-time, or variable hour to full-time. And so that's been, that's been a good adjustment. I think costs certainly, the, the health insurance package is quite expensive, and that's really what we've looked at, I guess, to try to maintain our budgets.
Well, Commissioner Moza, one of the, one of the things that we constantly look at is that fine line between what is an appropriate amount of full-time people versus variable hour people. Because as Steve said, the minute you change or... Because as Steve said, the minute you change or move variable dollars to full-time dollars, then you're adding additional benefits too. And, you know, what we've talked about is, is in our community, with the proper wage, we do have, with our number of colleges and universities in the area, we do have the ability to maintain a fairly good, you know, roster group. And so, and overall, I think it, it does help the taxpayers from the standpoint of keeping the things down in their, in their, you know, I remember even Administrator Berg has even said that sometimes we might even have retired people who are willing to come in and do variable hour work that are experienced in this area. And they can do it out of savings to the county, and we, we certainly, we need to do our obligation to, to keep that, keep that down too.
Yes, yeah. And I, I think that the adjustment, what we've noticed in the last year is, we were, we were struggling a year ago, even doing applications. And the increased wages has got continual applications coming in. So I think this is a, a good step to hopefully, we've got the recruitment now, hopefully we can keep the retention piece.
Questions? Commissioner Gross?
No, I got one question. I mean, not that you're going to answer, Steve, but not Mr. Berger. There is, here, but why are there's, there's nine positions in here that aren't fully, aren't a hundred percent? How is this variable, can you explain this variable grid? Why are you set at fourteen dollars, now we want to go to sixteen dollars?
I, I think part of ours is, historically, I guess, our full-time has always been paid less. Part of that goes to education. Our four-year, our full-time counselors are required to have four-year degrees. They have some case management responsibilities that, that our variable hour staff don't have. And so, so-
Okay. So we hire a part-time person, they don't need the same qualifications as the regular people?
In, in our, in our position, that's correct.
Mr. Berger?
That, Madam Chair, that is a very good explanation.
Okay.
Commissioner Gross, is that he does not expect the level of service out of his part-time people because they come in to almost maintain versus improve the, the situation. And the full-time there are to counsel and, and, and work with them where the other ones are there to maintain the shifts. That's why they are paid less.
Because I see the majority of our people are a hundred percent. So we expect our part-time workers to be fully qualified, I mean, to-
Part-time are there for more hours, yes.
Right.
Yeah, the variable hours fill in on the weekends and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Highway Department. Morning Lee, good morning Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first item that you have is the approval of the annual township maintenance contract numbers for twenty-eighteen.
Yeah, we met last week with the Highway Committee on Tuesday and then with the townships on Thursday. We went through our spreadsheet on that. Nothing changed as far as our, our procedure on how we put those numbers together. We did have about the same miles as we did in the previous contract. There's seven hundred and forty-four and a half township miles that we maintained. We take a look at all the costs involved and the actual costs included in just doing those miles of maintenance, and it's just a little over five hundred thousand dollars worth of, of costs there. We divide it by the miles. And then from there, we put that into our five-year rolling average, which is what we started a few years back. And I think as we've seen from the townships, they, they do like the consistency of a steady kind of a contract rather than going up and down. Last year's final cost was six hundred and eighty-two dollars. This year's final cost, before we added in inflationary factor in the five-year average, was, was six seventy-seven. So it went down about five dollars per mile. We did increase our inflationary adjustment by one percent. So we had been using two percent. We decided that the act, well, we didn't decide, we took a look at the costs. We're actually kind of cash flowing this stuff for about eighteen months. Because these costs start January first of twenty-seventeen, and then this contract starts July first of twenty-eighteen. So there's an eighteen-month period there where we've got increase in wages, increase in benefits, increase in fuel. So we're kind of cash flowing that, those increased costs. So we, we feel that they're definitely closer to, well, they're definitely more than two percent, they're probably more than three percent. But we like to keep things in kind of a, within reason if we do any increases. So our final proposed contract rate is seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars per mile. The final number, the contract number last year was seven seventy. So we will see a proposed decrease of three dollars per mile for the townships.
Okay. Comments?
Okay, I was, I guess I was at, I shouldn't say I guess, I was at the meeting, and I think it was pretty well received that how, how is this working with the maintenance contract? And it was a very well-attended meeting too, and I think a motion to approve twenty-eighteen dash twelve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Oh, wait a minute, I don't know. That's not the right resolution, excuse me, I'm sorry.
The first, the first one would be the-
I'm sorry.
Contract numbers of seven sixty-seven.
I phrased that wrong. Make a motion to approve the decrease in contract.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the contract as presented.
That's in second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The twenty-eighteen dash twenty, or twelve would be the deficit bridge priority.
Yeah, we've got two resolutions here. These are required to get any state funding for town bridge fund replacement dollars or bridge bond funds. So every year we bring this list back to the board for approval. We take, you know, Lee's with me today if there's any questions on bridges. We have one resolution strictly for county stated road bridges and county road bridges. And we've got another resolution just for the township structures. And he puts together a map showing all five years' worth of projects and their locations. We do meet with the townships as the bridges come up in their area. We recommend or suggest either replacement or eliminations and then meet with them. I know Frank and I and Eric have met several times with you and Township out there. We've got a structure up there that I think we're, I think we're still a little bit on the fence as far as elimination or not. They would like to keep what they have, which we fully understand, but it's expensive to actually construct bridges, not just box culvert replacements, you know, in, in quite a few different areas. So we will continue to meet with them. They've got different alternatives, whether it be like a Texas crossing or maybe a lower-cost solution. I think Elmwood Township also has a bridge just maybe a mile southeast of Saban, down in that area where we replaced several bridges. We've got a county bridge to be replaced next year that's a mile east of one site. So I guess we've got, you know, historically, we've always had bridges where we like to meet with the townships and negotiate whether we should, think they should be, you know, eliminated altogether. If they are eliminated altogether, they're at a hundred percent funded by the state. There's no cost to the township, so. But there, there again, not everybody, not every township's willing to lose access and something like that.
When we eliminate a bridge, are you saying we're going to close the road then?
Correct, yep, yep. The roadway would be closed at the, the river crossing. You know, and the, the, when the structure gets to a point where it's restricted due to weight considerably, that's to a point where we start trying to say, you know, well, it's not a, not fully functionable anyway, you can't put full loads, legal loads across there. But, you know, I guess if it meets their needs and it still has a certain amount of safety to it, that's where it gets to a point where it's on our list where it kind of just gets kicked down the road a little bit. Once it's deemed not safe anymore, then we've got to come together on either replacement or eliminations.
So that Yulin, I see it looks like it's still on to eliminate, too.
Yep. We, we, we've just, hasn't really changed our resolution list on that. Like I said, I, I don't know that, at some point, we're going to have to probably take a look at this five-year list and see what we can approve. Because I don't think, there are several bridges on here, actual bridges. We've got, we've got one in Alliance Township where I think that one got ratcheted up maybe one year. That one's in an area where I, I think is, in our mind, is one that we would like to see replaced in the year twenty-twenty. There's another one in Elmwood Township. That's the one southeast of Saban. And then there's another one on this list in Glendon Township. So that one is, it's just, it's in between like the three-three-six bypass and, and Glendon there, you know, where that strata pit is. There's a really snaky curve in there, and that's another one that I, it's our plan to meet with Glendon Township and see what their plans is for that one. If that's something that they think they could eliminate or not. But we've got three actual bridges on here, not counting the one in Yulin, which would be possibly another seven hundred thousand dollars. So there's not that much town bridge funds available to the county. We get about two hundred thousand dollars with the town bridge funds. To do this many bridges, it's just not feasible either. So we'll have to work within a time schedule to either replace or eliminate these and which ones we work with. So that's kind of the, the way we kind of do it, the way it's kind of the, the case at hand is to kind of negotiate with these guys a little bit on, on what we can accomplish.
I'm going to approve resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirteen.
Second. That's twelve. Twenty, twenty.
We have a motion to approve twenty-eighteen dash twelve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, the next one is twenty-eighteen dash thirteen. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Last item, is that on my agenda item, Ryan?
I, there's three that I've got.
Okay.
There's something else?
Yeah, the last item is the resolution for reimbursing cities to include City of Moorhead for, I believe the way the resolution is put together, City of Moorheads dollars are reimbursable for maintenance within city limits for county roadways. And the other non-stated cities listed on the resolution, it's funding to help them improve and do work on not only our roadways within their city limits, but some of their own roadways. I know Lori, our county auditor, puts together, based on a formula, how these dollars come together. It's something that I believe has been going on for probably over fifty years or so. There again, it's just provides some level of funding for the cities for some of their roadway improvements and maintenance projects.
What are the board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-eighteen dash nine.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, the next piece is our committee report. Commissioner Campbell?
All right, on Tuesday, the thirteenth, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and we, we did talk about our five-year plan, schedule. There's going to be some tweaks to that from additional funds that have come through for the gas tax. And then, of course, now with this recent bid that we had on County Road Nine, that's going to, you know, allow for some, maybe adjusting some projects around. And then we, we got, we talked a little bit about the grant awards that were given to us. And then the, the other item on the agenda was the Township Maintenance Agreement contract. We went through those things with our accounting department and presented that to the townships on Thursday, the fifteenth. And so that, that was, on the fifteenth, we met, and as Commissioner Gross said, it was a very good turnout there. There was a lot of good discussion, a lot of questions. And I think they were very appreciative to our five-year look-back period that we do for that process. Those were the only two meetings I had last week.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On Friday, I attended the Early Childhood Initiative meeting, and we had a presentation on Childcare Live by Crystal McNeil, was a presenter and educator. And it was a consortium of Clay, Becker, Wilkin, and Ottertail Counties to promote healthy eating and activities for children. And it was open to any childcare provider within the four counties. We had some home visitors and some of the other providers that showed up for it. We have carryover funds left over from this early childhood, approximately ten thousand dollars. So they're trying to come up with some good projects to use to, to finish spending the rest of that. It's about approximately ten thousand dollars. And we also heard that there's been a loss of home daycare providers, both in Becker and Clay Counties. And we discussed the idea that some of these providers did not wish to deal with new requirements and regulations that had been put forth for them. And they thought that they could make more money as more income as pares in school districts with much less paperwork and bother. So possibilities for that would be to provide ACE training for school districts within Clay County on a one-day seminar type thing or one meeting, maybe two. Moorhead and Holly, they were talking about. And for the folks at home that wonder what an ACE is, an ACE is an adverse childhood experience, which could be anything from the power getting cut off at the home to one of the parents being taken to jail or prison. Those are one of the many instances that they refer to as adverse childhood experiences, which are being increasingly important as criteria to evaluate behavioral health. And so that's what's going on there.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Okay.
concludes my report.
Commissioner Gross?
Okay, Tuesday, I was, also was at the Highway Tracking meeting that's been covered very well. We don't have to talk about that anymore. Wednesday, Wild Rice Waterset Board went up to, they had quite a discussion on ditch taxes there. Customer there, not customer resident. There's a bit concerned about how they assess ditch taxes on benefited area. He wanted it spread out through the whole ditch and stuff like that. They pretty much go by benefit in the area, not just where the ditch runs. So, but good discussion on there. And again, I already mentioned before that the Red River Board has opened an office in Ada, and Robert Sip is the executive director up there, and he's already established his office up there. So they're already in business up there in Ada, already another place. Wednesday afternoon, I went to Drug Court, that Commissioner Mojo and I were there, and another good experience there, listening to someone that successively completed Drug Court, you know, and took her almost two and a half years, something like that, to go through. There's a very good story that she had, and a good accomplishment for Drug Court again. Glad I attended that. Thursday, Soil and Water Conservation District held an open house out there, and I attended that. It's nice to see that they're going to have a nice addition to their place, that they're going to be able to serve the residents better, and it's a good improvement out there. And then Highway Department meeting, which has already been talked about, that we had that discussion on lowering the grade per mile.
Thank you, Commissioner Waylon.
Well, let's see, I had Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee meeting last week. Just had staff updates and then more discussion on filling the executive director's position. Let's see, had a meeting with the Clay seniors out in Glendon, mostly discussed Dale Rowley's retiring, and I think he's planning on being gone by May, so they're hoping to replace him by March to have somebody fill in. So that'll be, I think, a big loss. He's done a great job. And then, let's see, the only other thing, Kevin and I met with Kirk about some strategy for a meeting with legislators next week on our, our- some strategy for a meeting with legislators next week on our, um, on our transfer station project. That was it for me.
Thank you. Last week I also attended the Drug Court. It was, uh, those are always moving experiences. I think that the individual can honestly say that her life has been significantly changed and made better because of that. Uh, so that's encouraging to see. I attended the Soil and Water Open House. There was a good number of residents in there, so it's good to see that they, they had a good turnout for that. And then last week, the MetroCog Committee, we had extended a job opening for the executive director to a candidate, and that candidate had turned it down. Uh, the number two has, uh, also had a life change and had to turn it down. So we are in the process of reopening that position, and then we do have a couple candidates that we will interview this week. So the search is on for that, but continue to be, um, driven to find the right fit for that agency. And then I had a phone call yesterday in regards to a resident that had been at the Planning Commission and also at this, uh, this board to discuss some concerns in terms of following up on the conditions put on Planning Commission permits. Uh, and so, um, took that, and we'll bring that to the Planning Commission next week.
Mr. Berg?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things from last week, the transportation that Commissioner Gross talked about in rural Clay County, uh, hopefully we, we got some feedback, push some buttons there, and it's, it, what it comes down to, it's kind of cost prohibitive to run it out there and the amount that's used and things. So, uh, there are some available, but it's costly in order to do that, so. The sales tax summary, Mark is working on a format to put that on the, uh, website as was requested by, I think, Commissioner Gross again last week. Um, the AMC Policy Group, uh, letter of support on motor vehicle, we went through all that, um, I think in detail. Uh, highway tracking has been covered extensively. Had a central administration managers meeting, uh, attended that township meeting with, uh, reference highway. I met with Dave on a couple of other things. Met with Darren in regards to some upcoming managers training. Had a, I guess, an extensive call in regards to the diversion and, and philosophy going forward and things like that, to, to talk about that in detail. Um, communicated with Nick from Construction Engineers, who's over, and talked about the change orders and just updated me on several things along those lines that we were pushing forward on the construction meeting, and that will be brought to the board then, not next week, because I will not be here, but I'll be with you after that. Um, and, um, yeah, I'll be on a little vacation here starting the end of the week. And one other thing, I just jotted it down, uh, just to probably reassure you that we do go through some pretty, uh, extensive training cycles for the courthouse and the Family Service Center on active shooters, and, you know, of course, that's in the news right now. I think we've had, what, eighteen shootings in the schools this year so far already, and public buildings have been targeted as well, uh, in the past. So, uh, just to let you know that we do go through drills in regards to that, and we have processes and procedures in place. Um, we can't prevent all of those, it's been talked about, but, uh, we have to be trained in somewhat reactionary to those situations. So just wanted to assure you that, um, your county is looking at that as well and continues to do so.
I just want to say that I neglected to say it in my, uh, committee assignments. So, um, after Mr. Burnett came with concerns last week, I did make rounds to follow up in some of the points that he put up, and, and we have honestly spent a significant amount of time, staff has, on those issues. I trust that Mr. Berg will follow up on the, the septic piece that was new today, but just for your information, both Soil and Water, the watershed, and our departments and township, quite frankly, have been brought up to speed on that, and I am happy to take part in a meeting this spring if he wants to arrange that, so, um, so we're covering our bases there. Is there anything else? All right, we are adjourned.